Let's call the meeting to order, please. Joe's gonna run a few minutes late.
We just ask Karina if she can hear us, just to make sure we have problems.
Yeah. Karina, can you hear us okay?
Yeah, I sound fine.
Thank you. Okay, so first item on the agenda is the June twenty, June twelfth meeting minutes. We don't have those. I don't see boys approved them in the two subsequent meetings. We have June twenty-sixth meeting minutes. Okay, so June twelfth meeting minutes were were not done yet. So those are still done. So let's go on to the June twenty-sixth meeting minutes. Any discussion on those?
On page seven, there's some things that are that are highlighted and in red. I think that was done. Just make sure that we're in agreement with all of this. The conditions as listed there, one through six. That seems to be what I remember as being correct. I just think that we could take it out of out of highlight and out of red and just incorporate it as regular written. Minutes.
Yeah, and number six was actually proposal to do number five. Four and five.
Wait, say that again?
So says proposal with quotes. So you need a bond estimate or letter of credit to stabilize and revegetate the disturbed area. Abandon in place and secure utilities. So the proposal we're looking for is something is an estimate to do items four and five.
Okay, maybe put that for items.
Proposal with quotes for items four and five.
That makes it clearer.
Well, that just just clarifies with five and with four and five need to be simply. Interesting easements by the technical I have a routine technical memorandum, number five. You have something like?
I do. On page seven?
Yep.
It says on H, remember I wrote, he said he would vote with Mr. Robinson to support permitting more dead ends? That is inaccurate. I did not say that I would permit more dead ends. It was that one particular issue that was going to be done, and then we loop it from now on. So that is not accurate.
Support allowing it. You basically want that particular project to be allowing that project to be dead ended. Just leave it at that.
That particular, that fifth one that we were talking about, that was to be dead ended, but anything moving forward was going to be looped.
We're gonna talk about that tonight.
Well, I'm just saying, I saw that, and that's that's not what I said.
So remember, I wanted to say to support permitting this particular?
Right, that that one dead end that we were discussing. And then anything after that would end up being looped.
So you want to just kind of limit it to what we talked about that project and not comments about future projects?
Yeah, if you want to do that, sure. Well, I'm saying we decide, I thought that we had talked about anything moving forward would then be looped, but.
So if that line read to support permitting this particular dead end in the water system?
Right.
That'd be okay?
Yep, that particular one, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written, along with the two changes made on page seven.
Sir, a second? Okay, I'm sorry. Steve, you here?
Sorry.
All right, yep, all right, all in favor?
I am, yeah.
All right, one extension. Okay, so four in favor, one abstention. Those are done. Make a note. Next one, July tenth, twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any question, comments on these minutes?
Yeah, on on line sixty-four, sixty-eight.
July ten.
July ten?
Yeah, I don't have one on mine either, but.
Yeah.
On it should be probably the second page where it says discussion during meeting. And then number one says plan of want is asked. Okay, I propose we cross out that whole paragraph. And replace it with a single line that says applicant did not attend and did not provide any written proposal.
Yeah. Each five. Item five, public participation in other business. Basically, I asked if there was any public participation that should be below item five. It's up. It's up during the work session as item eleven.
Oh, okay, yep, that one.
Yeah. Seconded motion to adjourn. Have a second.
It says member Robinson seconds.
What am I?
Well, um, can we just put member Robinson seconds?
Yeah, it's fine.
Was Paul just speaking? Because if he was, I couldn't hear him.
I'll turn it on.
Thank you.
He's on now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm being you tonight, Paul.
You're doing a good job. Although you're being too silent.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for July tenth, twenty twenty-four with those changes?
Then I'll move.
Second.
Paul, OJ, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions? Okay, that's passed. Um, July twenty-fourth, we didn't have a meeting, so we don't have to worry about the minutes. Continue into the business. But lots at the end of Franklin Street. We in Moja here for that? One up.
So after we had a discussion, Mr. Marlowe went ahead and he did do some erosion control. He did put some things down. But it's still not enough. Okay, I can.
That picture kind of wrote on here to show you
Can I have copies of those, please? I'll pass them around.
The town will have to make it. I only brought some for them.
It's just mulch that's in the road, just from the rainwater, and you can see.
Go ahead.
Joanne and Leah got a hold of me around August fourteenth. And asked me to come up and look at their concerns with the problems they've been having with the stormwater up there. That's how I got involved.
Okay.
So I went up and took a look at it, and then they gave me an email that came from the town on the twenty-fourth of July. Came on twenty-fourth of July from the town to Joanne that said that they didn't have a storm order, a written storm order management plan in place, but the public works director reviewed the work and he felt it was sufficient to mitigate the runoff from the property. However, they continue to monitor it. And that was on the twenty-fourth of July. So I went, they gave it to me. I was up there. It was raining. Water is coming across the road, going down the side of the road. So I took that email and it was, you know, said that public works director was, you know, thought it was sufficient. So I went and saw Nate. I said, look, Nate, here's your email. You're saying it's sufficient, so I'd like to talk to you about it. And I told him straight up, I said, look, if you don't want to be involved, just tell me that. What was that? But, you know, they're saying that you looked at it, and he didn't want to go there and look at it with me. You know, and we agreed. He said no. And so I told him, I said, well, what I did was I spoke to Joanne and Leah. And I suggested to them that they ought to go talk to Peter directly. I said, go talk to him. Maybe you can resolve this, you know? And they didn't feel comfortable doing it. So I went back up to this street and Peter was there, so I spoke with him. And he asked me what, you know, the issue was. So I told him, you know, you have the water running across the street, need to do something about it. And, um, you know, as you guys know, that there's never been a storm water management plan done for that piece of property, and there's more than fifty-five percent of it got disturbed. And so they just feel that, you know, that it needs to have a storm management plan in place. Um, because they're receiving runoff that they never received before on their properties. Uh, so I had a conversation with Peter about it. I thought we had an agreement on some solutions. I told myself, maybe we can resolve it here, and it ends here. But on the same night, he came back here to the select board and uh, had conversations with them about it. And so I don't know where it's going, I guess. I guess they would like at this point now, they'd like to see us, you know, storm waters management plan done for the spirit of what it is. Um, feel that definitely meets the threshold to have a management plan. And would like to have one in place.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Me to step down in the audience.
Yeah, and you should sit in the audience, and Mike will be seated in case we vote on anything. Okay. Um, anyone else like to speak up on behalf of the complaint? No, I'm gonna just wait till the neighbors speak first. Just just wait till the neighbors speak. Anyone else? Do you have anything else to tell us?
Wanted to clarify a few things that Peter had mentioned. Um, he had mentioned that there were three trailers on that site before. Never at one time. I mean, I've lived there my whole life. There was no trailers when I was younger. Then one trailer went in. And then the one on the end came in. And then the gray trailer, the first original trailer got removed, and then a camper was put in. Um, so I did want to do that. He also stated that my shed was on his property, and it was. My dad had built it, and it was about five inches over. But I have torn that down, that part of the shed that was on his property, and he knows I did. So I I felt like he shouldn't have said that on Monday, because he knew that I took that down. Um, also, he had said that, um, you know, he didn't remove any pins, and he he was so kind to bring a picture in for the pin that he has there. But it's just a metal rod. It should have been a pin like that. I mean, towers give the survey. And towers has those nice, you know, silver pins, and it has their names on it, and that's the pin that should have been in that corner, not, you know, a metal rod like that. Just another thing, too. Um, I know once we had talked about a driveway and they said there was no parking on the street. Well, the street ends right where the trailer was. And again, Mr. Marlowe provided a picture.
This was the trailer right here. This was the car court here. So they park on it's their private property. It's Mr. Marlowe's property.
Where's the end of the street here?
Well.
Or is the end of the?
Officially, it ends over here officially.
It is back here, back here.
My property line always. This, this, the town sometimes.
Where's Lee? Where's Lee? Is that? Okay, all right. I just trying to get. Yep.
This is where it was a carport. And so I had mentioned, no, no driveway there before. They said, oh, no, there was always a drive. No, there was never.
Yes, we saw that a couple weeks ago. Yeah.
Yeah. This is what where it can.
Right. Yeah, I went up there and looked at the. Yeah, me too.
And town stops here. Town sewer main goes up to this man. There's a lot of main that comes up, about here crosses right here, comes down through here. I put that back in. I put that in in twenty years. This is the original trailer. See, the pavement stops here. Okay, that's how it always was. And I got some pictures I'll show you.
But that's private property.
Right. But it was twelve inch cinder blocks that ran across here and down here. Started at asphalt height, twelve inch. I got some pictures I'll show you. So everything was elevated. Okay, trailer was a high.
So the cinder block went down here and this side.
Here up in this walkway.
And this side here was elevated, what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
We can see those, the blocks. So this was your high point. And the water used to run down this way.
How long do lots in that elevation stay there? Were they there for?
Up until we tore the trailer down this year.
Okay.
They have nineteen seventy.
So there?
Yeah. Grandparents were. This trailer was put in in July of nineteen seventy. There was another trailer here originally, which is how I'm married to my brother. Brother. He went out around ninety-eight or so. This before, ninety-six, I guess. And then they used to be traveled for all of them, come and eat your seat. That's what happened on the park. But this was a high point. You know, I want to stick them more into the storm water. This was a high point. So twelve inches higher than the pavement. The water used to shed this was all grass, except for the driveway. All the water used to shed this way, and then there was a path work here. Aman ends here. But this back yard all shedded back to this lot, which was part of it. Okay, this is a separate lot. So now, when we moved trailer, the blocks up plus lowered all this land. I know he's gonna tell you different, him and I have different opinions about it, but you go up there and you can see. It's the elevation of this land here. It's same as the road over there.
Right.
The water is running down here, and then they made a cut in the asphalt here, tips sewer line or water line, whatever it was going. Running down, turns, goes into that cut, it's lower than the asphalt. That's across the road and goes down her driveway here. Over here, he built the fence and burned it up. Saw that. And it put inch and a half stone out to about here, was about forty, fifty feet long, ten feet wide for stone strip. So when it rains now, it acts like sponge, collects the water. Used to, before, it said this was twelve inches high. So all you got was a little bit of rain here, and you should just go on to her land, all grass. It was, you know, more large soil right there. Now it's made a burn, acts like a curb. Running down against this curved line, uh, who's in the react, so.
And the fences on the.
Well, yeah, but let's talk about stormwater. It's just so much. And so she runoff coming this way, turning into reality here. Coming down here, puddling here, crosses the road where the trench was disturbed, goes this way. From right out here, I got pin, comes down. And under the spirit of the stormwater, you know, after post construction, it shouldn't be any more than pre-construction. And it definitely, definitely is. So it asks people to enforce the ordinance.
In the pictures you showed us with the water going across Franklin Street, that that never happened. That started happening.
And you can see, you know, when you build fence, we're saying, they're all saying they like the landscape and the movement. I mean, nothing wrong with the quality of it. Except it created a burn. This extending this driveway with stone in its pitch back this way now before it used to pitch it back. Now it's coming this way, so when it rains, acts like sponge, pumps that water, it's up against that curve line, comes down. And right where it was sent to opposite terms.
Something, something like. I I have a question for you. Yeah, look at this picture and see these blocks here. I don't see any blocks here.
That's already removed.
No, that's way back then. It's way back when, I, you know what I'm saying? I I see him here, but I don't see him there.
Well, they were still there, Paul.
It looks a lot more recent. I'm I'm just trying to this, I'm trying to get a look at. Yeah, I see the trailer that you're talking about here, and then let's see where you're talking about that camper here. But that with those blocks, these blocks right here.
Right, it used to be a mailwalk right here.
Yeah.
They ran up this side, yeah, turned right here, went, they ended up exactly with this.
How old is this picture? Does?
I don't know. First time I seen that ball. That's probably.
Well, that's the trailer.
If he's not, I just can't see the blocks there.
That's one of the pictures that Peter.
They were there. To the end, I don't, what happened was my grandmother's property that my parents that came on. And I sold it several years ago that somebody else. You know. I just have.
I'm more confused by that versus this one, because if you look, people backing out or even, you know, it it just looks like there was no nothing there. It was it was easy for them to, yeah, be able to back out without any, you know, blocks there.
This.
That's why, that's.
I had the survey done, December survey. This was done August the twentieth.
Do you have any pictures other than that show the blocks in there? See, the camper was still there. Yeah, because I just can't.
Yeah.
She finished it today.
No, no, no.
What did they put in? You say states?
Seventy.
What?
Talking about the blocks.
Stakes, yeah. Yeah, they were putting solid state, you know.
And inside the old.
Okay.
Yeah, you kind of see, yeah. Chris, you saw all that is, but that right here. See the elevation and the road and the ground.
And that's where it's at, right there.
Yes.
So they were going on this here.
Yeah.
It's hard to even see in there, really.
Yeah.
There's none down there, but that's where the camper is.
No, they go down that. We'll see, yeah. In there.
Okay.
Okay, I can see him now, yeah. You can see him here. Right in there.
Yeah.
It's just the gray. This is not a public image. Computer, but.
Here, you look at the graph, look at the, you see the elevation.
Yeah. So the dirt and everything went to the top of this.
That's where it started. It's on the grass, all grass.
Yep.
I got others. I was trying to find some, go the elevation.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, that's what I was looking for.
Good night job, but, you know, the straw bales and everything like that. It's just not enough. It's still warm. You know, that, that's that's why I wrote on those pictures after.
Yep.
Oh, what's that? I don't know if you guys are there when it rained. But people, were you okay when it was raining?
Okay, I went after.
See with.
Yeah. Well, I was there and straw models are there. I installed problem. They're just laid on the ground and it's air stayed. It should have been in couple inches, regen destruction manual, it says in it. It should be recessed in, but they're against it. The idea was to stop the water, let it through, slow it down to let it through the filter. Because leading the water, right, what's happening now, all the water is going right underneath the silt fog, silt, that's it.
Still still socks.
Because the ground is, you know, high ground. So you get the sheet.
Now you can see it. I mean, it's there.
Yeah. So all they're asking is that they're being planned to develop. That plan may be.
Going through the salt sock today.
Yeah.
That is exactly what Mike is saying.
Yeah. The grade's just opposite of what it used to be.
Yeah, no, even I have different opinion to that, that they had talked to. He said, no, he never removed any, then he reiterated that to the selectmen again. Saying, oh, it's twelve inches higher. And it all went towards connect the road. And it was all grass.
I don't suppose you have any topple of that long before then?
I do, but I couldn't lay my fingers on it, because I had this done one twenty point or that. It was never a a survey done on the property. Because of what it was.
That's all I ask.
Yeah. And.
I know you're not lucky, but.
An eighty eighty-five, eighty-four, eighty-five. I surveyed it then, back when I was in serving at school. Over here, surveyor, actually. And that was one of my projects. And this pin that Joanne is talking about, that one there. We never knew. I grew up, you know, my parents, my grandparents moved in here in nineteen seventy. Howie was there in the sixties. I was in my whole life. Never knew what, you know, what they did that survey in eighty-four and eighty-five. It was like, holy shit, you know? So I knew where that pin was. It was an iron pin, wasn't in the right places, below grade. Steve came out, you can see right here, disturbed, I am pipe found, he put a reed by set. Steve put on his end.
Yeah.
It's not there today. Joanne showed you the picture of what's there. They got scratching around over there, lost it. That's another story. That's nothing to do with you guys. It's a misdemeanor. She can handle how she wants to. But he's upset of all of what we said, I guess. But he's upset about what we said, I guess.
And this was picture before. The erosion control, so there was a lot. We don't have that much. And this wasn't taken like. What I did was I took a picture of snapshot to show you the date picture taken. But there was in question. At the selectman's meeting that the flooding occurred and it was flooding like everywhere else. So I screenshot of date of that. Just to prove that.
Yeah, you know, so that's. Where they're at, that's how I got involved, but, you know, they they feel that there is an ordinance, so a lot of ordinance. You know, keep the water running, running in that house. I thought, like I said, I met with Peter that day. I thought we kind of had it hashed out. We didn't get to this point, but I guess. I guess, um.
You're here.
We're here. Um, she had offered to put the hedge basin on her property. Let him do that, but now I guess that's off the table. Yeah. After. I developed that day, I talked to him, then he showed up, he stopped meeting, and there's accusations made that weren't true, or they feel that weren't true. So at this point, it's. So done with it. And then the next thing is, um. Make sure that, uh, you know, put up that nice new fence. But it's, uh, not put off the boundary part. Most of it's three inches, some places it's right on the boundary. He knows that, we talked about it, I said, look. On that day we met, I said, it's not a problem. Let's just keep this all here. Let's take care of it. He was in agreement with that. Then what happens from now, you saying no, it's a fence. I guess that falls and you're. Your hands again. Pretty simple, it's a straight line, you go down, it's in full string. Okay. That's where we're at. Thanks.
Okay. I've been through that.
Yeah.
Okay. Peter, would you like to tell us anything?
Yep. I'm gonna carry this around with me if that's all right.
That's fine.
It's that's together, I'll bet.
There's three here. You know, pass another one down that way.
I'm gonna, I have a multiple.
I have multiple pictures and documents that I wanna put over with you. Okay, um, I did deal with Mike. I'll admit things that I did do. I disturbed the grass. I just took down the trailer. I had to put the excavator to take the trailer down. I have not disturbed where the parking was. The parking is exactly the same as it was, except that I've stoned it in for the town. Okay, I've been, I've been working with, um. Karina. Whenever she called me and she'd give me documents, I would take care of it that next day or that afternoon, okay? The same with Cal, you know, so couple items. I was told from Mike that the water always graded towards connecting road. The picture tells the whole story. This water never graded towards. Okay, was it grass? Yes, there's grass, and I've seeded it. I've seeded it twice to make sure it takes, and thank God we've had the rain. This, this shows, it shows the driveway. This is a good shot. This shows the trailer and this shows the runoff coming into the street. I didn't change anything. That driveway exactly is in the exact same location. Except for the stone that I put down for the town, a twenty twenty by, a twenty by twenty pad, so they can turn around, so they're not using Leah's driveway. Yep.
Question.
Yes.
When you're talking about the stone in the pad, are you talking about where this car is parked?
Yes.
Going in here.
Yes, I have a twenty, I'm gonna give you a picture of that. I have twenty by twenty pad, yeah. Okay.
You're, you're saying that this picture depicts that the water's not running.
It is running. It's just, I didn't change it.
Running down this way, not running towards.
Correct. It didn't run to its connected road. It had grass that I disturbed. But I questioned whether I disturbed that much cuz the road is my land. The area where the, where that tunnel was all the way back was a large parking area. And I wanna clarify something. When I dug to put the sewer line in, okay? There were three sewer connections, a Y, it was a triple Y, one going to that trailer, one going straight back to the back of the lot, and one going for connection to the summer trailer. So I just assumed there's three sewer connections there, that there was another trailer at one time. I don't know that to be fact. I'm just going by three sewer connections that I dug up.
This is your town G I S map. It outlines. My lot that I purchased. And I'd like you to note where the road ends. The road might be paved all the way in, but the road ends. Right at the end of, um, that lady's lot, I'm rolled up. Okay, the road ends there. It's my land. Okay, if I wanna tear it up and put stone down there to absorb the water, it's my land. I can do whatever I wanna do. I own. Am I wrong in that?
You could be a little more specific about tear it up. When you disturb the dirt, then that disturbance counts as.
Maybe I want it to be a stone drive. Don't want, I'm just being, I'm being.
Well, it depends, yeah, it depends on square footage that you disturbed.
But I still own the land. It's my land. This one, which is very important. This one shows a map and I've highlighted certain areas. This is the town main maintenance model that goes through my property. There's no easement for that. There's no easement for that water line. For the town or my property. Is that bothering me? No, let's fix it. Should have been fixed. Ten years ago, twenty years ago.
So there's a blue line and a red, there's a blue line and a red line.
The blue line.
Blue line's the water, what's the red line?
The blue line is the water, and what it will require is fifteen foot easement, in case that ever has to be worked on, and that's with the red line. It needs an easement so that if you guys, they get a frozen pipe break in the winter time or something, you can go on that land and you can dig it up. That's what needs to be done, you know, the right things need to be done. Okay? The yellow box, the red box with the yellow, that's the twenty by twenty that Karina asked, one of the requested, this always comes from Nate. I, I talk to people. I don't just, I get permission. So I talked to Nate, I I had come over, come over and take a look, what do you need here? So I did a twenty by twenty, and says, that enough for you guys? I did the same thing on the Breck Street and I gave the town an official. Easement to turn around. I live in this town.
So what was this, what was this? Twenty by twenty, this yellow shaded area?
Yes, that's a stone driveway for the town to turn around.
It doesn't come out into, also. It's like a little hammerhead there, you're saying they would go there.
The hammerhead, it's just right on the end, it's on my land on the end of the.
It's up, yeah, but they hot top, there is your land.
Yes, yes.
So it's a hammerhead to back, so, okay.
That's an easement that Steve Toward will put on a plan, so no matter what happens there, the town has an easement. And we'll put an easement on there for the water line. So that. This can never be affected.
How long has that water and sewer line been in there?
I don't know.
Mike, do you know?
The water, they ate this water like it's talking, so the connector road is twenty plus here. The sewer is done in the sixty.
Okay.
That used to be all woods, the, uh, the state took it, they took that property, our property, why I'm just committing to me, when they put. Never broken, we used to own the way.
That was thirty with the. We, there's one on the thirty or plus there.
Yeah.
Oh, there we were.
Alright, so I monitor this every single day. I'm down in Massachusetts or on vacation. I monitor this every day. Karina's been in touch with me, Cal has been in touch with me, whatever they need, I take care of, okay? Now, see the arrow in the bottom right hand corner? So I was told that I, I disturbed a pin. I never disturbed that pin. It was rust, it looked like a stick, so I put the, the rocks around it. Now, I will say this. It's for some reason that there was, that Steve Toward had a pearl, the proper one with the, the, the cap on it. I would have them enclosed at my cost. I have no problem with that. If something got disturbed because of me, I did dig a little bit in that area cuz they told me that's where the shut off was. For the summer trailer that was there. So I have no problem. If that pin has to go in, I'll put it in, but that's the pin that I found that was there. I painted it orange, I put some rocks around it. Now. This picture was taken this morning. This picture is the state of that piece of property. If you look at that picture and you look at the original picture I took you, took. Nothing has changed. The, the grade is the same coming onto the road, and as I said, the driveway is exactly in the same location. If anything, the stone driveway I put in is absorbing, it's six inches thick, it's absorbing some of the water runoff. Okay? Now, running, running up that, you you'll notice the fence. He talked about, I put the fence on the lot line. I did. Looking in hindsight, mistake. I said to later, I'll run it, I'll take it down, I'll have this down next week. If the mom wants me to take it down, I'll take it down next week. I'll move the whole thing with foot, I don't care. But the whole reason behind it is, look how close it is stacked up. So that means that the plows are really gonna hit, or that the plows would push the snow and it would get all damaged, and I didn't want it to. So I gave myself as much room as I could. Okay, I landscaped it, I burned it. And so what's Mike, what Mike is asking me to do, and I'm not gonna do it, I'm saying this right out, he's asking me to put a drywall on my own's property. At the end of my fence. Okay? I'm not digging on somebody else's property, I, cuz it'll never end. So what I suggested to Mike and he didn't like, is I suggested that we put a hot top berm from the end of the fence, going down, passing over the two driveways. And now we keep the water from going on our property. Now. People may not.
Where would the water end up if you put?
Well, it's just gonna run down the street like it's always been. I haven't changed anything. If anything, I'm absorbing more water on the stone that I have up above where the trailer was. And you see that I put in a stone driveway, and that stone's eight inches thick. Now, the west side of. The west side of Franklin Street. Is lower than the east side of Franklin Street. And then it gets, it flows down to Le Breck Street. Almost every single house driveway on that's west side of Franklin Street. What's that? Oh, I'm sorry. Get carried away. Almost every house driveway on that side of Franklin Street has a berm. In front of their driveway, just enough, inch and a half, an inch, just enough to keep the water from going down onto the property. Now, there was a movie, and I saw the movie, and I, I did it, it's live. I saw a movie of the water coming down the street. We were digging the sewer line, and you gotta admit, you guys have all been here, ladies, everybody. We had these storms where you don't get an, uh, you don't get an inch of water in twenty four hours. We've been getting an inch and a half of water in an hour sometimes. So that's when I got caught when I was digging for that sewer line to bring it back, and that's when that movie was taken. I mean, it was, the water just came down. It, you, you couldn't do anything about it. Much like many of the, uh, neighboring towns around us had washouts of streets and everything else. So, I mean, I had a hole open and that's what I had to deal with. So. Do I apologize for that? Or is it my fault? Yeah, it is. I'm the guy doing the work, but I had no control of that much water coming down. I'll do anything I want. You want the fence moved, I'll move the fence. Okay? So you gotta understand, okay, that's my piece of property. And I know what they're gonna say. They're gonna say, oh, no, we've been driving on that driveway, that's our driveway. It's not, it's their driveway, but it's not, it's my land. And if they wanted to fix it, they should have fixed it years ago when Mike Dunn and he opened it. He should have given his sister an easement to use that piece of land. I'm not staying that. I don't wanna do that, okay? But, you, you know, what are you trying to do to me? Okay, that's an easement. There's no easement to get onto that property, and I contacted my attorney. There's no standing, just because you've been going over it, that you can use it. And even if there was a standing to use it, it wouldn't be for residential use. It wouldn't be for commercial use. And when I say commercial, they know, they're running a commercial business out of a G, a general use area. And it's, it's not in our bylaws, okay? They're running the taxi, the shuttle connection out of a residential neighborhood. Okay, it's not there. It's, it shouldn't be there. The address of the taxis is not. Franklin Street. I don't care. I'm saying that. I don't care. I don't care. But if it's gonna keep getting pushed and pushed. I'm gonna have other ways, you know, there's gonna have to be other ways to do it. I don't want to. I wanna leave it just like it is. I wanna give the town an easement for the water line. I wanna give the town an easement for the turnaround, and I suggested at the, um. At the selectman's meeting, why doesn't the town just have Ray Corbett take a ride out and just take a peek? Is, is that unreasonable? So that one person is saying this, one person is saying that, let him come out and take a look at it. I think the berm would solve everything. Now, at the end of Franklin Street. I had David Avery come, and she, they have movies of this. And David Avery ran the camera down because I wanted to locate where the connection was, so I didn't have to dig everything up. So David Avery ran the camera down. And the camera got stuck. The pipe is crushed in the street. The main sewer line for the town on Franklin Street is crushed, and it's crushed by a water line. Is it the main line? Fading shape main line? I don't know, but it's crushed. So it's only, it's probably crushed, probably three quarters of the pipe size, okay? So it can't be connected. So when I looked at it, I said to Nate. We didn't know at the time it was water, like crushing it. So I said to Nate, I said, look. If I dig it and I repair the sewer pipe, which I'm very capable of doing. If I dig it and repair the sewer pipe, excavate it, do the job, I said, will you at least hot top it when we're done? Because I don't have that. I don't have the ability. I don't even know where to buy hot top around here. And he said, good deal, we'll take care of that. So I dug it out, I got down there, way beyond me. If you, if I had touched that water line, the whole town would dark, all of Franklin Street would have no, no water. That's beyond my pay grade. So I asked them and they said, they'll do it by fall. They'll take care of it. Karina agreed, we've talked about this. Just take care of it so that it's repaired. It's only about two feet of sewer pipe that has to be repaired, but. It's what the water line is pressing down on, okay? So what I would suggest, okay, I'm not gonna put in a drywall. What I would suggest is when the town. When the town comes to fix that and they have to hot top it. I'll pay for an extra ton of material when they come on. I'll put a coat of sealer down, and then we can put a berm in front of the driveway, just an inch and a half. And that should solve everything. That'll keep the water going. Yes, it's the water going down the road. It's, yeah, it's going, it's going somewhere. And that should solve everything, that'll keep the water going, yes, if the water going down the road, it's, yeah, it's going, it's going somewhere, but I haven't changed anything on that lot. The only thing I've changed, I've said this before, is the grass, and it's completely seeded, and it's coming in pretty good, especially on the road line, um, and that's it.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Paul?
Peter.
Yes.
Says you would not put in a drywall basin on Leah's property.
Not private property, no.
Would you put a drywall basin on your property, would you put that, would you be willing to put that hot top swale so it brings the water back across the road? Put a drywall on this side, and that would take care of two things, it would take care of all of the water coming down so it wouldn't go on.
It's not gonna solve it, no.
It will.
I don't believe it will.
If if you put a swale so it comes across to the right hand side, put a basin over here, it it will do two things, it will take care of her her water, and it'll stop the water from any of this that's comes down here now, from what I've seen these.
So you don't want me to cut the road with swaling?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know if you'd have to cut it, I don't know if you'd cut it.
It's not gonna, it's, Ray, it's not gonna come over to that side, that's not gonna solve it, I guarantee it, yeah, it won't solve it.
A little bit of construction too.
Oh, I understand.
I gotta tell you that, swales are used that way a lot, and get, get that over to that right hand side, get it into a drywall basin. Might alleviate, you know, a lot. Of what what I see here, other than that, I don't see much of a way around it, so. That's how I look at it, but I'm just asking a question, if if you're not willing to do it, you're not willing to do it, so, that's, that's kinda.
I I think the simplest thing is a small, um, like everybody else has going in the street. I mean, the other thing, if you wanna go that far, you could, the ground is amazing here, the water just goes through it, like there's no tomorrow. But not when you get two inches, an inch and a half of water, I checked all the water runoffs and uh, how much rainfall, and we had an inch and a half in two hours. The ground can't absorb that, but it can absorb normal rainfall, that water absorb normal rainfall, but it's not gonna absorb the kind of rain we've had, these are just fluke storms, they just sit.
I don't know about you, but they're not fluke.
Yeah, man, they sit around, they sit, they sit right over us, yeah, you know.
Alright.
You know, the other thing with the stone driveway is, I suppose, you could put in a presby system underneath, uh, it'll absorb some of it, you know?
I think just a drywall base, take care of all of what you got.
Any other questions or? Anyone else have any questions? Steve?
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, everybody on the street seems to think that it's not done this before, and it's been raining for years. So something's obviously different. I think maybe just getting engineers scratching around and finding out what's going on. There's obviously a problem that wasn't there before in my mind, what I've heard, heard, seen, people have talked to.
Well, I'm not sure, not knowing what the previous topo was of that property. Not having a plan of that, you're unable to make that kind of a decision.
It's actually.
It's like, well, it's like yours, you had, you didn't have any topo of your property versus when my grandmother used to live, but. They, you know, the guy was more than willing to work with you to get that taken care of, and I, I'm not sure, I see that here, but.
Uh, all these people seem to think they haven't seen this before.
Cause it ran off the other way. Cause it ran off towards connector road. That's what they're saying.
Karina, did you have anything to add?
Hmm, not, not really.
Okay.
I don't know, I'll tell you.
I think we need to make a determination as to whether or not the stormwater management would just be triggered, that would be the first step. Go. Go ahead.
Pretty cool, we're rolling, both the property, make a decision, get that filled like the end of the board.
Well, it's not the select, I mean, if if it's, the determination that Jimmy just said is whether or not. It meets the threshold of disturbance, if it meets the threshold of disturbance according to our ordinance, then it requires stormwater management plan.
Mm-hmm.
That's it, doesn't matter whether it's residential, if it's disturbed that, it it meets that threshold, and then, and then Ray can get involved.
Okay, so he's the one really to go over there and make that determination.
He's not gonna know what was disturbed.
And and I'll, I'll say this, Ray says, you know, like you're saying, I don't know, we're not engineers, but if Ray comes over and says what you said, you know, let's, let's put a a dry wall over here, then I'll do it. If he comes up and says, this would solve the issue, I'll take care of it, I'm saying that to the board.
That's what we said when we had another problem over here on.
Spoon Street.
Spoon Street, we, we, hey, listened to the applicants, and then we said, let's have Ray take a look at it. So, I mean, that was the same type of a situation, I think, that the work was done, and then after there was an issue, and we said, let's have Ray take a look at it, so, I would. I would say that, you know, if Ray's not gonna be able to determine the. How much of it was disturbed versus what it was then versus what it is now, I, so. As you're hearing, there's nothing to say.
I I do agree with Paul in in this stance, that we should approach it similar to as we did with Steve's property and the burglions, that we maybe have Ray review it. And review a couple of different approaches to maybe remediate the situation and try to approach it that way.
The.
Yeah. Go ahead, Paul.
The question I would have is, who's who's gonna pay Ray to do the work, the town?
I think that's what happened the last time with the noseworthy property, so I would agree.
Okay, what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, Karina, you know, probably like two hours of race time. I don't think we spent much on the last project.
I don't even think it went over, oh yeah, he said go.
He went over.
I believe so, yeah.
But can I point out, I'm giving back to the town. I'm giving the town an easement.
I don't see any give.
I'm saying Tower to give you an easement.
You might also, you don't have any right to dump water on these guys.
I I totally understand that, I wanna solve, I'm, and I agree, I had no right to do that. And I don't think I've changed anything, and I still wanna give the town that, a turnaround, I think there's a simpler solution. Than me digging on private, somebody else's private property, because then it's gonna be, oh, it needs to be cleaned out now, or, it's that, it's it's never ending, I don't wanna get into that. I'm doing it wrong, and, but I think we should look at it, and places, you know, I don't solve the problem, I don't know.
Okay.
I think it was running off all the time.
What happened also in in Steve's case was, it wasn't, it wasn't Ray Corbett who came up with the fix, it was the applicant hired a landscape company. They came up with the fix, so it was the applicant who who came up with that fix, and then Ray looked at it and said, yeah, I think this will work.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
I, I think we could say, send Ray over there and do a, you know, quick review and look at the pictures and what's going on.
It'd be better i- if the applicant and Mike could, or, I'm sorry, it's not your property, but whoever the uh, the property owner is, Leah's property, to come to a resolution. Without coming to the board, that Ray was, that Ray supports, you know, so if Ray says, I think a berm would work, or I think a berm and a and a drywall will work. And then you both come on to, you you both agree to that, then that's, to me, that's the best way, but. If 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 there can't be, then it's gonna get, Ray will at least have the facts about, yeah, it looks like this was disturbed, Ray will be able to go out back and see if there was any evidence of drainage going down by connector road, I would think. And then, you know, so, why don't we just cut the Jason? Oh, Joe wants to speak though, yeah.
No, I was just gonna say that I would think that a neutral third party engineer, which is exactly what Ray is, he doesn't care.
Yep.
Who doesn't, I don't say he doesn't care, but he has no vested interest in either one of you or either property, he'll go and look at it from an engineering point of view and say, what's the best way to stop water from running down the town road?
Yep.
And look at it from a town point of view, and um, I I would agree that that would be a good next step to do, it would benefit the town, would benefit both property owners, or all, multiple property owners. And I would trust his judgment, and if he says a berm is is, you know, the most practical way to do it, I would hope that we could come to agreement on that. I I would also um, wanna look at, like, one thing that stands out to me is, you you do have that. Looking up the road on the left, you have a fence and a rock wall that does seem to funnel water, what in this picture looks like it ran off the side of the road here. Now looks like it doesn't, but I'm just wondering if if, like, at the end of the rocks where it turns into just the berm. If there was a channel that went underneath fence, or you removed the bottom board of that one section of fence, would that be a good place to disperse water, it looks like there's there's. Um, a second fence further back.
Yep.
And there's a whole grassy area in between.
Yeah, I actually, what I actually did there is I put a, the post in the ground, and then I put a two by ten pressure treated on the ground, because I didn't want loom, you know, rolling, going onto their property, so I sorta. Sort of screwed myself when I did that, so, yes, could I, you know, the water, it, the whole thing with the fence, it used to go down, there was a gully there, so, and it went. I guess down towards, it would end up on La Breck Street.
Paul? Okay, my question is for you, so, Peter seems to wanna give the town the, the um, an easement to be able to maintain that water and sewer. Do you think that, and in the interest of keeping the water from running off of this lock from down the road, would the town be able to assist in in doing some of the work here to be able to. Acquire that easement and to be able to stop the water from running down?
Let's, I'm just asking. Look, I'm a step at a time guy, let's have Peter, I'm Peter, sorry, looking at you, let's have Ray look at this. And and come up to us what he thinks is is the best alternative, or the multiple alternatives that would solve the problem. And then, and then if the property owners come forward and say, we all agree to this, then we're good, alright, if not, then we. Are gonna have to make a decision on how to forward that, but let's not jump to the what ifs, let's, let's see what.
I wasn't what if.
Ray, Ray has to say.
Mike, sorry.
Yeah, I guess. If my question is the. I wanna back up, we only concern more than fifty five percent. And why if you're just saying, okay, follow if what the ordinance is, I don't wanna see Ray get involved and that cash pay as a motherfucker, you bet. Uh, it's not the town's problem at this. It's the developer's problem, he created it, he didn't follow the ordinance. The wind came back, came here in December for the select board, addressed to me, he said, look, I think there's something going on, and you guys came back to her and said, well, we sent somebody out there, Ron, whoever. We sent them out there, and winter time now, we don't think he's triggered anything, okay? And then it became springtime, more work started to happen, again, with permanent here, the trailer down, take it out of there, groundwater, sewer cross property, everything changed, property changed, disturbed more than fifty five percent of property. What do you do every time that a developer or somebody does this on their property, we're gonna call Ray in and have the taxpayers pay for it, I don't think that's right. You know, we keep hearing publishers talking about this easy, that's got nothing to do with the stormwater, that's nothing more than a bargaining chip for him to try to get you through the work, he came right out and told me, didn't you, Peter?
Yeah, wait, this is not a place for you two to have a discussion, talk to me, talk to us, us, not just me, but us.
Okay, told me, hey, I meant down there, if if the town makes me go in the planning boards, not giving them the seat. Know what you want, just like we said, tearing up the app, I can tear that up with Ray, go ahead, you've got the script of easement rights to go across there, yeah, how come I didn't do it? I I reached out to my attorney for a soul, I said, hey, we have to need this, they said, oh, then we drive it over for fifty years, I said, no, she don't have to, script of easement rights. But then you have to leave, they need to leave. But that has nothing, all these issues have nothing to do with stormwater. And it, that was upsetting, it was dragging all this other stuff in, that has nothing to do with what the problem, the problem is, you got runoff leaving his property on other people's property. That's why you have a stormwater management.
I I agree, but the stormwater ordinance doesn't say you can't run water off onto other people's property, it says, it, wait, let me finish, Mike, it says, through any development. You can't increase the amount of water that is running off your property onto other people's property, a- and I'll tell you, I mean, if you look at this picture and this picture, yeah, he may have had a bulldozer or.
Excited.
Whatever he had, equipment out there, but if you look at the land here and the land here, um, this one shows. Visually, more, more slope from the mobile home towards the road, then this one shows from the flat land to the road.
I think it's going, it headed back towards connector road.
Somebody's gonna shoot grades or something.
Well, you can't, well, you can't shoot grades on on what was.
Can't now.
What was there in the past.
What you might find is in that line of trees in the back, if there was always water that went back there, Ray will be able to look at that and say, it appears, I'm looking at this, these trees back here, that. Water was shed back there, that is an under served area, so Ray, someone like Ray should be able to look at that and say. There was water running there one night, it's not running there now, I would, I would suspect, and that's why I would say that Ray needs to look at it, but if the water's not running there now, obviously there was a change.
You go, Dave, that I was up there, that guy in books. Just the guy in books, to make enough water come down through across the road. Just a guy in books.
I agree with that. But, I'll tell you the deal, I tell Kurt, Karina, okay, I'm an honorable guy, I've never thrown games in my entire life, I never said, never said that I would throw that out in the town, I'll say this right now. We're gonna get an easement on that water line, but that is what the outcome is, because I deserve to have nice with the water line, it should have been done twenty years ago. We don't want the easement, and you're gonna get a turnaround like I gave, just the question was asked to me, Nate, when I did La Breck Street. Nate's supposed to make, can you give us an easement, we can't turn around the front end order, oh, what do you need, he says, we got twenty, I said, I'll put away, Steve Tower, put this into the town, what do I care, I live there. Okay, so, I'm saying to you right now, I don't want anything to add to that, that is gonna be put in, and Steve Tower is gonna meet me, and it's gonna be in there, and it'll turn into that, and that's, that's a stone, so I never said that.
Paul?
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we have Ray take a look at the property, to see what his thoughts are about whether or not there was, how how much was disturbed, whether there's any water running towards the back. And to see what he could, he would recommend for mitigation uh, for water that's running off the property.
Uh, I think we have Ray evaluate the site and, you know, let, I mean, if he says remediation is needed, let, you know, let the applicant, you know.
Well, we're gonna have to ha- have him take a look at, if it was running off property, because if it was, then meets the threshold, and then, then we'll have to deal with it from there.
Hold on, show me your one more question.
When this happens, we all gonna be involved, are we gonna?
Hey.
So we can be there to.
Typically, that doesn't happen, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think.
But you're. You'll get, you'll get the, you'll get.
He'll be there on his own, he won't be meeting Peter there.
Ray will go there probably with Nate, I would assume.
Yeah.
And he'll, he'll look at the property as a whole, he'll get the minutes from this meeting, um. I guess homeowners could go out, talk to them, and tell them their concerns.
Well, we don't want.
Well, I mean.
I mean, we want someone to objective, third party, like neutral party to look at it, not with everybody shot at.
Right, he's being paid by the town.
So, you wanna rephrase that?
Well, I still think what I said was.
Can you repeat it then?
That, you should, the town should hire Ray, to go out and take a look at this property, to see if, see if it. First of all. To see if, see if it, first of all, if the. If, if the land has been disturbed. To the point where it needs to meet the storm water management, the town Lincoln. Whatever he uses to assess that will be up to him as an engineer. And, and further to take a look and see what he would recommend for mitigation. To keep the water coming off of the town's property and off of his property.
Okay, is there a second? Michael seconded, alright. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Hey, the motion carries. Alright. Thank you, folks.
You guys want to keep a set of those to give the right?
Yeah, good idea. We'll keep the photos, join in, submitted too.
Yeah.
Mike, do you have those? Yeah, so submit those to. I'm saying, I can give my. Okay. Yep.
The someone want to do that?
In race, I got one copy that I'm giving to Ray for the town.
Write the motion down, so I can write it down.
We'll have it on recording.
Yeah.
Okay, Paul.
Uh, OJ, if you could just, if you want to throw those um photos in my box, I'll make sure that they're distributed.
I will do that. Thank you. New business, uh, I'm gonna want two minute break here. Alright, five minute basis.
Play Paul, we'll plug in a fine in the end then. Oh, new business.
So, I am, I just want to see if I'm understanding this right. You got a pop right. Don't meet this Nate, nobody else.
Right.
That's typically how we, that's. Yeah, if a, if a landowner, in my opinion, if a landowner was paying for it. Then landowner would have the opportunity. This, this way here, it's being done at the town's request, the town's paying. But you'll have the right to get all the information that he. That, that he succumbs from doing all this. It would be, but it, it could deter everything because you got, you know what I mean? Your thoughts versus his thoughts.
I can, I can definitely inform all the parties when Ray plans to be out there, just so you know that, you know. I think Ray periodically comes up. I think it's the landowner's right to kind of. Be able to know when he will be there, just so they're, you know, don't have someone. Showing up at their property. I, I think that's fair enough where I could say, hey, Ray plans to be here on this day, just so you guys get a heads up. I think that's fair.
Think you better ask him if he wa- if he wants that, Karina, because, you know, I mean. Right, that's what I'm saying. If, if Mike has a strong opinion and Peter has a strong opinion and they're both there in Ray's ear the same day.
Yeah, but the property, Leah's already asked me if she could be notified when Ray goes out there and I told her yes. So I think that's fair enough for me to let her know Ray showing up at this day.
You heard it. That's fine.
You guys don't want that? I understand the benefit of having.
Yeah.
You want to be fair.
Then the next time or if it gets to that, I'll be.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I, but I do think as a courtesy, I should let them know when Ray's going to be on their property.
We can agree to disagree.
Okay, that's fine. That's usual.
Unusual that, you know, had that house since nineteen sixty-one. And never had any problems, never had any problems the last twenty years also. He comes in and does all this work and now we've got this.
I don't mean any disrespect to, at all, but Pete, he was already left, so to be continuing to talk about this to me is not.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Good night. Alright, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
I do.
Thank you.
Next work session regarding whether the planning. I can show Joe's back seated. Where the planning board should update the subdivision regulations so that all developers would have to loop the water system and if not, get a waiver from the planning board. Paul?
Can I make a comment? I, I think that we should get Nate Hadaway's request uh information on this, input on this. And if Nate. Being the public works director and in charge of the water, says that he wants, he thinks that this would be a smart thing to do, I would like to see.
I mean, he was in favor, but last time it came up.
I, I, if that's the way, that's fine, but I'm not sure. I'd like to get something in writing that says Nate agrees with this. This is what he wants, or you know, something a little more substantial than what I know about it. I can see both sides of it. I can see what OJ's comment was that, that we have a lot of developments that have a lot of dead ends in them. I can also see the benefit of having a looped system of, so.
I mean, it really depends on the type of project. If it's a new subdivision, big piece of land, we're actually building a new water system, then it makes sense. But if it's someone. Minus subdivision, you know, too large.
But looping, e- e- even that, even then looping. It is a good thing. It's, it's a good thing for any water system. It makes the water flow. It, it doesn't give bacteria to grow. I mean, and, and especially in a type of a. Transient environment that we have here where a lot of people aren't here for large month periods of time. It makes sense to loop, but we have a lot, it doesn't mean that what we always done wrong, we should continue to do wrong, I guess.
No, the applicant, go ahead. I, I think it's very um circumstantial though. Uh, I mean, to make, I think to make a blanket thing that says you have to do it. Is gonna be, uh, cause more problems. Like, look, do, look at the, the Mansion Hill project, okay? He took two separate pieces of land that technically were owned by two different entities. Granted, they had common principles in those entities. But there was three dead ends that existed up on Mansion Hill. He's extending those dead ends, but they're still dead ends. I see that as very different than taking a three hundred acre parcel. And creating more dead ends.
But isn't that why, OJ, i- i- isn't that why we have requests for variances and waivers? Because not everything is the same, so with, if something. Puts an undue burden on somebody or, or, or it's not, it's not gonna help. Like, i- in that case, you're saying, that's making, when they say. One of the waivers we would like to request is from this section of the ordinance. Well, if they can come in and ask for those, you know, if the general rule is that they, that they.
I think it could, it's whatever the engineer recommends when he reviews.
If the general rule is if you can loop, you loop. If you can't, then you have to come in and ask for a waiver for it. Then that's, that's same as a lot of, as other things here and our ordinance is that, that allow people to do that as well. That's. Domain is what you loop, you don't loop.
But their instances, we'd have to loop, you'd have to get, you know, um easements from all the neighbors, buying properties to loop around.
You put on that checklist, and never, this engineer, when you provide them, on the first, you prep parcel. See, each one, it's one problem. One example is industrial park. That is not loop. You could come right out from industrial park, rest of the town's piece of land on connect the road, connect. This way, the pipe broke, you shut off each side of it with a cutoff, while it's still connected, the flow the other way. If we done, that's the doing thing also. Definitely. If you, you have a big loop coming around here and a break here, cut it out here and here, wherever the cutoff there, you'll get water coming the other way. While you have a water user and whatnot.
Okay, so, but I mean theoretically, any system could be looped. All it'll, all it'll, all it'll take is dollars. So I mean, are you gonna argue that if someone comes in for a waiver, well, you could argue that a hardship, money is a hardship.
It wouldn't be for money, what they could say, we don't own the property that would allow us to be able to loop the system. Okay, example, if someone else owned the property along the road, you know, a, a development going in. On one side, they couldn't loop back around because they would have to loop it on the end of the, has to go in here and come out here. If they don't have the property to be able to loop it, and they don't, but where possible. As, as Michael says, you know, where possible, you do that.
I've been trying to find out, can you loop it in the same hole? Like dig one ditch, put your water line, your feet line in and loop it back in the same hole. Like you do a piece of baseball, you get the way you're going. You know, they did it.
I'm not engineer, not answer that.
That's why.
Well, there has to be a certain space in between waters, so thirteen feet.
He's saying kind of water line and a water line during the same, so you go up to the end of the road and let it loop. Where do you loop it back to? If you loop it back to the beginning, it's just redundant. It's, it's too redundant, side by side.
I think it has to go to a, the furthest point and be.
I don't know.
But still.
To answer Steve's question, the books come together. What's gonna happen? They both gonna be going like this, come back around and meet the middle top.
Right.
You take a site ready, get action, which bottom, you watch what happens. They all come to the same place, they can equalize, one pressure, one side will take precedent over the other, let's do the man here, both over here.
I mean, Ray was, Ray was all about having systems being looked.
I mean, if, if it was that easy. The one that we said didn't have to loop it up off Crooked Mountain Water, I forget the name of that world, but. They could have just run another pipe in the same trench going back for like.
That was.
Small dollars. Right.
The two talk together, main line is loop or not current. That's the, that's the purpose of a loop. In other words, side of the line, dirt, water, sediment, everything else. But they come back together side by side, it's not gonna current or loop. Then there's not a.
How does it know if it's there or five hundred feet over there? Part, I don't understand.
Yeah, but time to be over there, can't say the water can't flow, come back with the other way. Pressure's gonna equalize, you won't get any pressure going.
You're still gonna have same pressure, but.
I've been on that for a while. I just haven't got any answers yet. Makes sense, totally. Do with the heating system.
Yeah.
It all knows where to go.
If, if it were that simple, they could have done it up there.
Well, I mean, the state in Hampshire likes people, likes developments where, where you can to loop. Ray.
No one here doesn't agree with.
Okay, so.
So I just.
Yeah, so why don't we just put it in that where possibly you have to loop?
Yeah.
But I mean, the engineer will reviews all these site subdivision plans, he reviews the water systems, he makes determination.
But it's not in our, it's not in our ordinance. If it was in our ordinance, wherever the engineer was, would look at that, say, I recommend that this be looped. Before it gets any, the problem is, we've been fighting.
I know.
After, after fact of it, instead of the before fact, which is if you put it in the ordinance as one of the things that, one of the things to be checked. Then whoever the engineer is can, can look at it and say. We think that this could be looping, that's our recommendation.
I think the engineer knows that it has to be looped, because it's a question of him having a look, a look in the ordinance to know that. I mean.
Not to me, that's not the case, because it's not, it's not up to the engineer whether it has to be looped. Because the state has no requirement to loop it. It's the town that, that, that can make that requirement to look at it and, and, and do that recommendation.
Yeah, we have our engineer to review their work. Yeah.
Engineers, well, yeah, it's a lot cheaper than. So they figure a way to say. So I think before, we should have something in writing. That states that. Less otherwise specified.
The last time this came up, it would have been, the board had voted, they would have looked it, but they, because of the money. Because of the two, you know, you were trying to loop the high pressure and a low pressure line. It's quite prohibitively expensive, or let it slide because of the money.
Sure, well, I didn't do it because. I mean, it was already.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, so four other ones, paying a bill, now all of a sudden, this business one needs to be changed. Not seeing where we should have been.
If there was something in the ordinance that said that in the beginning before.
Yeah.
Um, what do you call it? Developments over there?
Self peak, self peak.
Well, the one they're working on, they're putting a loop in. Anyway, uh fireside, box fire.
This, this is the new road.
Oh.
I don't know what the new road is called.
Aspen Heights.
Okay.
Had we had something that says you have to look at looping, what, before they even started that, they, they built that in, but like Mike said. The question was asked after, and they had already designed it.
The, the other complication, the other complication with that particular one was it was two different pressure zones. We're asking him to loop from a one pressure zone into another. And then by doing that, put in pressure reducing valves and moving pressure reducing valves that have been in place for. A decade plus.
Right, right, but had they known that right from the beginning, before they even started. They just said, okay, we need, in order to loop it, here's what we're gonna need, and developer would have said. We really don't like to do that because it's, or because that, it could have come in for a waiver. By what you're saying, saying, you know what, we, we, we think that there's too many other. Uh, things that are gonna have to be put in there that aren't gonna benefit this, and that, that would be a reason to not, not loop.
One, one other question, I didn't know. There's hardly five, I think, be. Now, okay, we're gonna move that and we gotta put pressure on PRPs and all over them. Who takes care of the PRPs?
Comes home, it's homeowners association. Anyone have any thoughts? Do we need to talk about this further? So long as there's some language in there that says we're reasonably possible. Or even if you use the word.
How about we say when recommended by the town engineer? Whoever that, or, or they, yeah.
It was recommended by the town engineer.
But it was recommended after the fact, not where it started. If during the preliminary meetings, you say when recommended by the town engineer. Or, or, yeah, the town engineer. Looping will be considered.
I, I, I think this. Really a case by case basis. Should be, yeah, on a case by case, this board should be making that decision, not the engineer. He can make a recommendation to us. He recommended that we did it. And again, I, I think it's important and, and it should be done. But when you're talking about two different pressure zones. Uh, that to me just seems like a.
But that wasn't your biggest thing either. Your biggest thing was, and so many of them are already out there, that, wh- why do it now? That was your comment.
Well, that was another, I, I agree with that.
You know, that, that was your biggest thing was, and, and I agreed with that, I said, you know, what a whole, whole James Frank, we've got a ton of them around now. But I, what I was thinking about was, why should we continue doing it if it's really the wrong thing to do? If it's not the best intention of the water system, why should we continue letting it happen? That's why, so I look at it and think, but I understand what you're saying too about it being difficult sometimes, so. I just think that the engineer would know when it's reasonably possible, when, when you can put it in, so that would benefit the town.
So we have two types of subdivision. We have minus subdivisions and major subdivisions. We could consider adding it in. Major subdivisions when practical.
That's fine.
I still think the language should stay with us as authority, that we determine what's gonna be on less support.
We already do, we already do make that determination. Right, but Paul's saying we should put it in the hands. He wants to codify it. I agree with Mike that we should retain that decision.
I don't know, we have enough. Knowledge on this board. I've been involved in water for a lot of years.
To overrule the engineer.
To overrule an engineer. And, and I think that that's what you pay them for, you, you pay them to be a professional. To overrule an engineer, and, and I think that that's what you pay them for, you, you pay them to be a professional, to know what's the town's best interest. And I think that's, that's a, the right thing to do is to let the appropriate authority who knows, who's gone to school, who understands all this, you know, we can always overrule, but we can always, they can always apply for a variance or a waiver, what if the, if the guideline is that, for the major developments, that this is what gets done, then that's, it's at least a start, and it, you know, we'll see if it works, if it don't work, that's all Jay always says too, we can change.
Okay, I mean.
It kind of, it kind of gives us a, a starting point to try and go.
I mean, DEs also looks over these water systems, so you know, they, they prefer it to be looped, so I'm sure they would flag it anyway, regardless of whether or not we put it in the ordinance.
Yeah, it just kind of gives us a place to start with it.
All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna put for major subdivisions, it is preferred that water systems be looped whenever possible.
Where reasonably possible.
Reasonably possible.
But we're reasonably, reasonably possible as determined by the planning board?
Yeah, that's fine.
No, but we would, oh, but we would make the decision based on what their engineer says and what our engineer says and what, what all of this, just like we did last time, we make the decision, not.
I, I like to use it. First sentence, that all major subdivisions um, reasonably, well, will loop the system, period, don't say where reasonably possible, don't say it, and if, and if the developers just look, we, he comes in and says, can't do that because we're gonna need three PRBs over here, we're gonna need a backflow preventer over here, we're gonna need, whatever we're gonna need. It, it, it's just, it's not the best interest of the town.
Come get your.
But let's just put it out there that we think that, that they are, that they should be installed for major subdivisions, period. And then let the reasons come in as to why they are or are not, and, and, and that would mean the engineer, the town, the engineer, the developer will talk about it and their reasoning, why or why not?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, but at least it's, there's no ambiguity, then it's all, you, you know, for the major subdivisions, we'll do it then. That's it, the planning board always has the ability to, to, you know, make the final decision, we all know that, but at least it tells new developers or old developers, whatever, if you're gonna do a new development, you wanna be looking at looping the system if it's a major development. Just keep it simple.
Okay, so, all right, so. Just, I'm just, this is about, thinking, I'm gonna read it over again, just to for major subdivisions, water system shall be looped whenever possible.
I, I wouldn't say whenever possible, I would just say should be looped, period, and let the engineer of the developer, let the town engineer, let the planning board decide on whether or not it's reasonable, prudent, or there's too many other things that are required to make it work that's gonna cause a problem.
We never keep, like, yeah, given the town you apply to give a waiver, not through the planning, through the planning board, people assume you give a waiver, they go through the EBA, I just say a lot. Make sure it's a document that goes through the, well, waiver from the.
I, I need to put it in there unless waived by the board.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I would prefer where reasonably possible as determined by the planning board, but if people are against that, I would at least want um, unless, uh, uh, or, or you can request a waiver from the planning.
Yeah, I, just unless, unless waived by the board, just.
Right, just.
If we don't put that in there, what's gonna happen is that we won't, they won't be able to get a waiver or make it less stringent, because they would have said they can. What the waiver part becomes something we can work with.
I mean, you know, reasonably possible is, um, is kind of subjective, right, and that's what we're here for, we're, we're like subject, subjective. Decisions.
Work, work.
Yes, we're, we're reasonably possible as determined by the planning board, that's, that's the language I thought would be.
You know, you can have input.
The planning board is in that position, whether we do it through a waiver, or, or.
I, I don't think the last party that came in would have pushed back so much, was, wasn't so cost prohibitive, I think if you were looping two pressure zones the same, they would have just said, okay.
I agree.
So I heard they already bought the place.
Sorry?
I, I heard they already bought the place, wrote contract and didn't want to take the extra, extra, that's what I heard, but.
Well, they already had an approved subdivision at fireside, and we were then trying to run a pipe through an approved subdivision that would have caused them to come back, technically, they would have had to come back for site plan review, revision, an amendment to that site plan to accommodate and move condos and putting in a, what does it need?
Yeah, they had to move it, yeah.
That was, that was.
Saw any right of ways in between them or something.
They would, they would have had to redo their documents because now they have to make provisions for all these easements.
That would just been another reason to use. So you wanna read what's the final wording?
Yeah.
Put in vote.
Well, let's just vote on the, like, I'm proposing we're reasonably possible as determined by the planning board.
He's not, he's just getting, he'll be, we'll, oh, get to public, we're not in roomwork session, I'm taking public, we're gonna vote on this later on. Yeah. Okay, so for major subdivisions, water system shall be looped whenever reasonably possible unless waived by the board.
Good.
Good for me.
Okay, so, is there a motion to send that up?
I'll make, I'll second that motion.
All right, so Paul made the motion, OJ seconded, all in favor?
All right, look at that, thank you, Jim.
Aye, aye, aye.
Um, before we move on to the next thing, I, I meant to introduce, the public sitting in the back is Sean McGoon, Sean is the new, um, planning enforcement. Compliance, not enforcement, thank.
Good luck.
For the town of Lincoln, um, he also holds a, the same or similar position, I don't know what the exact title is, Donovan Camp, Thornton. Um, I'm gonna let you just say hi to the board.
Good night now.
Yeah.
I, I basically come to these meetings just to keep abreast what's going on in the towns.
Mm-hmm.
Go to the select board meetings as well, just to, again, see what's going on, so when I get out of the field, I have a kind of idea of where both parties are going with this, and just make, it helps me do my job, basically.
Okay.
So, uh, that's why I come, I bring my, myself, I bring over forty years construction experience, uh, residential, commercial, industrial with me. I have a pretty vast background. I enjoy working here so far, for the first week and a half.
Okay.
You got a lot going on.
We do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Great. Final thing, discussion regarding possibility of an additional third party engineer.
I just, this is, awesome, I thought we, we took a.
Well, so we have to, you know, well, Karina has identified some engineers that would be interested, um, or we could approach, I should say that, to see if they'd be interested. Um, this, I was waiting for the board, so what do we want to put out there for requests for, for proposal? Do we have any things we want in the proposal? Do you just a general, say what can you do for us?
We, we've been hiring Ray to do this for a lot of years, I would think that we would have Carol type up a small response file, what do we call it?
RFP, request for proposals or request for qualification.
Identify what Ray does, Carol can identify what, let's go for those engineering.
Break his job down and then put out a request for proposal based on that.
Right. Carol should, should write down.
Okay.
Let those, go for those services, then we can put it out, whoever Karina has. Yeah, I like, I could look at the scope before she does that, so we can see, but, and we also probably want to maybe not just this board, but maybe the new client's officer to take a look at it and see, see, he's gonna be working with the engineer, I would assume.
Yeah.
This guy, you have to coordinate his rulings with Ray, we need to make him, the client out there, separately in his own.
Wait, a new engineer?
Correct.
No, when i- if we get a, a, another engineer under the town's contract, we would contract this project with Ray, this project with the new company, this project with Ray, not, and, 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 you know, we may give one, all of the, the big subdivision, you know, big projects, we might give the other one, the, the, the single family, um, stormwater management.
Might be, the other guy gets, right, it works out that way.
One thing to keep in mind, you know, I'm not against this, I, I think having another engineering firm available, but in light of the fact that, that any applicant may request the planning board choose a different third party consultant, and the request may include the name of a preferred consultant, um, and the planning board must, um, exercise reasonable discretion to determine whether the request is warranted. I think with that, I'm gonna say now, going to us and the applicants that we might be getting, um, more third party reviews by, um, the applicant's request rather than by us putting out this RFP and hiring another, another.
Find out, that's, yeah.
Actually, I think.
I had a.
It's in the RSA, it's, yeah, I mean, I've got both of them, one excuse that was given, but what it does say is the applicant may request. They can request all they want, and planning board can say, look, we feel more comfortable using the one that we've always had. Is, is there a reason why you don't want to use, the only reasons that we've ever had submitted to us verbally or otherwise is lack of being able to get, get to the project, so, and, and this RSA has been out there forever, and no one's ever really done it.
Right.
You know, so I don't suspect that you'll get a lot of people saying, we want to use our engineer, because then it becomes a conflict of interest, because they, they said, you, use our engineer, well.
No, 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 it has to be a third party engineer, so if Horizons does the engineering work, okay? They, they can request a third party.
They say, Ray Corber, we, we want to have Ray for the engineer. And, and the planning board doesn't know how well they get along with Ray Corber, so they could be a, a, a buddy of somebody else's, you know, so to me, I think that I don't think you're gonna see that problem arise that much, because of two things, one is, because now we're gonna have two engineers instead of one, so if one can't get to it, the other one, it's gonna go one and one, one and one.
Eh, 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 may, maybe you're right, I tend to think the other way, I think the bigger projects are gonna come in with their own requests for third parties.
You know, we don't have to, don't have.
Well, it says we should.
And, and if you look further in that, it says that the planning board that requires a third party inspection during the construction process shall, as part of the inspection process, develop a scope for the proposed for the project inspection, consult, consultation with the applicant, we've never done that either. That's nothing that, has never been done, I mean, if you look further along those, we, we're supposed to get detailed invoices with reasonable pass descriptions for a services rendered, we've never gotten that, so I mean, I think we need to look, we need to look a little bit more at that and, and, and talk to the engineers, talk to Ray, like, I've been, I'm compliant with, with this third party review and inspection.
Something I don't like.
Bruce.
I'm strict.
Yeah, that's it.
So is everyone, o- okay with that? We're gonna move forward, put out a request for another engineer?
I'll make a motion, move forward and put out a request for another engineering service.
Okay.
Provider.
Is there a second? Steve, Paul made the motions, any, any other discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, I will abstain, OJ abstained, all right, so we got four, um, yeses, one nay, and one abstention.
Can I just chime in real quick here?
Yeah, please.
Um, for me to be able to put together a RFP that truly defines what the planning board is looking for, I think I'll need more direction from the planning board as to like what that rotation will be, you know, is it going to be a one for one type scenario, and I think to be fair to Ray Corber, we also need to make him aware of that as well, that is it going to be every other application that comes in gets rotated between the engineers, is it going to be a split with new subdivisions and site plans? I think I just need more definition from you all, um, to be able to advertise what we're looking for accurately and to also be fair to those firms that are gonna be bidding and also be fair to Ray Corber.
So I mean, Ray's been the go-to engineer for small things, I mean, retaining walls, the project we just heard a little while ago, um, you know, Steve saying.
One. Hey, it's one for one, it's fair way to do it, you, you can keep, put both engineers interested by doing one for one, if you just tell all the big ones, go to this one, and all the small ones go to this one, you know, to find, an engineer company wants to do that, so, for me, that's, that's one for one.
Okay.
I think.
But. Sure, on the, on the big stop, I think she's, you know, but is, we're gonna have a different engineer in the technical review team every week?
I, I think the technical review team.
To be honest, I, well, if I could chime in again, I'm sorry, I think the planning board's purview over the third party review is only subject to subdivisions and site plans, not necessarily our land use permits.
Yeah.
Um, so I think we're, we're focusing on the, 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 the ma, the, the subdivisions and site plans, which the planning board has purview over, not necessarily the LUPs.
The land use permits are, are as the.
The administration takes care of those.
Water slackman, I think, I, I'm not sure, Karina, water slackman and or the town manager are the, are the a- approval of the land use permits, you're right.
So.
Yes, so that's what I'm saying, so TRT, I don't think will change as far as, unless y- y- you know, I'm, I'm looking more so as, uh, applications that come forward to the planning board.
Yeah, so I think we should alternate one for one, one for one on the subdivisions and site plans.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Now, where there is a form of motion, we.
All right, so second.
Give Karina some guidance.
Steve seconded, Paul made the motion, Steve seconded.
And just to answer your question, I'm, I'm abstaining because I don't disagree that this might be a good step, I, I think that in lieu of the fact that we, I'm gonna stick myself, in lieu of the fact that I just found out about this rule, and that I know some of the developers have found out about this rule, that more of the big projects are gonna be coming in with requests for a different third party reviewer, who may be bigger companies that can, that can dedicate more time and move things along more quickly, I don't think, I, just when I don't, I don't, I'm not overly concerned about them, um, finding a buddy buddy partner that's gonna try to cheat the town, I, I think that, that in, in, and maybe I'm being naive here, but I think that in dealing with a professional company with, with credentials, that we would, um, want to vet them and make sure that there isn't any, if we find out that, okay, this third party reviewer has reviewed, we reviewed the last twelve projects that this guy did in six different towns, that might be a red flag. But if we're using some of these, uh, other distinguished, uh, known engineering companies that other towns use for third party review, they're not gonna ruin their reputation on one project in Lincoln that we would then tell the other towns about, I, I, I would, so I think it's a little premature to do this right now, I'm not against it, I don't think we need to do it right now, I'd like to see the next six big projects that come in, I'm just throwing that out about, maybe it's three and we'll get an idea, but if they all start coming in with third party review requests, we're gonna be putting out an RFP and hiring someone that we don't need because, because all of the big projects aren't, aren't landing on either of their plates.
See, we don't have I will look at the, I will look at the developers, whoever have come in, say, ask them to tell us why they don't want to use the town's third party engineer. Especially given the fact that we are expanding the service that we're doing by hiring a whole nother engineer, so the only thing really that what, what could they say? We don't like this guy? Oh, they could say he can't get to a soon, wait a minute, we've got two now. He doesn't, the only complaint we've received so far is, is that, and, and by having another one, you truly Make the services more readily available to the developer because you have to, and, and, you know, we're, we're not. And if something happens to one, then you still vet the other, so you don't have to then go out and do that, if they go out sick like Ray was upset. So I mean, by having two, it, the redundancy is truly, to me, better.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it'd be, it'd hurt to line up a second, second company.
We already voted, so.
Well, you made the motion, Steve seconded, and then OJ explained why.
Well, we voted on whether or not we're going to hire it.
Right, then Karina asked for more information, so then we wrote it on the scope.
You were looking, talking about the scope, whether or not. It would be one for one.
Right, right, and we refined that to just dealing with.
Subdivisions and site, site plan. Okay, so we have.
Three devoted board.
Okay, well, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Alright, so the new motion.
New motion is to go one to one.
One to one on subdivisions and site plans, alright, Steve second, all in favor, I opposed abstentions.
Abstaining.
Okay, so we've got three yeses, uh, zero nays and two abstentions, that motion carries. Alright, any other business?
On this police station, do we have a, uh. They want to take a straight rally, person in charge from the town will be in the job.
Clerk of the works?
Person in the work, clerk of the work?
You can answer that.
We didn't do, only two, three million, they, this police station, they paid dollars, I wonder if we have a clerk of the work for it?
We, we don't have a clerk of the works per se, we have hired LBA to be our construction manager. We've also hired a third party to test things, SW Coal. Um, along the way as a third party inspector for certain materials and specs, concrete, those type of things.
Okay.
It was like concrete doing a slump and a test and a harder test, now that's been done by third party.
Correct.
Okay.
Second question, why was that the, uh. The piece of plate down here.
Yeah.
The piece with the action shop.
Yeah.
I heard rumors in town saying we've had, they didn't buy hydrants and working. That, hopefully, that's not true.
So I got through the planning board.
Yeah, the, the selectmen addressed that, those rumors, um.
I did hear him, it's like.
Yeah, no, there was not a fire hydrant that didn't work or any failure in the system.
Anything else? Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Take your batteries out.
Take your battery out.
Make sure to shut off the recording too.